This is a call to order of the August 4th, 2021, regular meeting of the Duck Town Council. This time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Rob Mooney if he'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, with all the nations under God, with the faithful, with the faithful in this world.
Please join me in a moment of silence. This time, we're going to go to public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Jeffrey Bowyer, 105 Skimmer Way in Duck. Today, I want to give you an update of the events of July 15th that pertain to Chris Layton. I want to be clear. I'm addressing this to you, the town council, and I'm really not trying to linger on to this topic, but as a father of two daughters, where my oldest daughter was sexually assaulted in her younger years. Sadly, she's not with us today. She took her own life. My wife, four decades ago, was also sexually harassed in the workplace. What's interesting was it was common knowledge in the workplace that this individual was an abuser. Sue and I believe Chris's antics were well-known and ignored. As a husband and as a father, the Chris Layton abuse saga has been very disturbing to me. On Thursday, July 15th, I attended his sentencing on a female abuse case that one courageous woman said enough. It's not supposed to be this in the workplace. Sadly, I saw a very imperfect judicial system that allowed an abuser plead guilty and receive a very weak probation sentence. As I sat behind the father, the dad, my heart sank for him. His daughter and other victims also were present to see justice be regarded as a slap on the hand. How could a predator, that's my opinion, with years of allegations be allowed to resign from a job of 16 years and then have the town taxpayers absorb numerous monetary lawsuits and then the courts dismiss a guilty plea with six months probation? You tell me. As a retired business executive, I received extensive training in handling workplace situations of unwanted harassment. In every situation, it was clear what my responsibility was, and that was to address and act quickly and responsible in a manner that, in my opinion, this council or past council didn't do. So as this sad, sad chapter in Duck's short history comes to a close, I want to say to our elected town officials, you represent the very best interests in Duck's community and its visitors. I ask you not to drop the ball and keep a watchful eye on our community and employees and any bad intentions that you may see bring forward. As a taxpayer, I really expect that's what you'll do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
My name is Patty Bossert. I live on Pelican Way. A few years ago, I met a lovely young woman when I volunteered for beach planting. She was an intern with the town and was very hopeful she would get a full-time job with Duck, and she did. I then had the occasion to meet another young woman who got her dream job with the town as she was hired as a town employee. Today, sadly, neither of these two young women work here as a result of the horrible behavior of our former town manager. One of these young women stood up and said enough, and our former town manager was arrested. Last month, he pled guilty to assault of one of these young women, and the town has paid more than $300,000 in legal fees. Our former town manager worked here for 18 years. Some of our current employees started with him. Monica, you've been on the council for 16-plus years. Don, you met with our former town manager every week for more than 10 years. Nancy, you were a volunteer firefighter with him. If you didn't know about his horrible behavior towards employees, you either weren't paying attention or worse. You four let him resign. He should have been fired after he was arrested. I'm sure you four want everyone to forget this happened, but those two young women won't forget, nor should anyone. You failed these two young women. We deserve better.
Thank you, Patty. Anybody else like to address the council?
Donna Black, Fire Chief and citizen of the town of Duck here before incorporation and after. It is tragic as to what happened to the individuals that work for this town, but I want you to be clear, you need to know all the facts. I'm as sickened as everyone else with what happened. Be careful, there's other people that felt the pain of what happened and didn't know all the facts, including council members, including myself, despite what it may look like. The reason I'm up here is you can ask anyone away from here, one of the things I do want to make sure happens is diversity, inclusion, and equity for all, everywhere, and it's unfortunate that in my own town, from the boss I've known for 18 years, we had a situation. But please, please understand, there's more to the story, and I felt as bad as anyone for those two young women. If you talked to them, they would say that for you from me. Just please know your facts, because it hurt us all, not just two. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
This is a public comment from Steve Alterman of 100 Ocean Crest Way. Members of the Duck Town Council, on the agenda for the August 4th, 2021, excuse me, 2021 meeting of the town council is an item relating to the appointment of a council liaison with an organization called the HOA Forum. While I support council involvement with community organizations, and I know that the ongoing liaison with the Duck Community and Business Alliance, also known as the DCBA, has been very much appreciated, I was just wondering exactly what the HOA Forum is. I do know that our community, Ocean Crest, is not a member of the HOA Forum and indeed has never heard of the organization. And inquiries have revealed that our management company, one of the largest on the Outer Banks that represents numerous Duck homeowners associations, has also never heard of the organization. Therefore, I was wondering whether the town council has received a charter or mission statement and a list of members for the HOA Forum. If so, are these documents available to the public? I know our community would be interested in learning more about the organization. Thank you very much, Steve Alterman. And then I have another public comment from Ron Blunk. My name is Ron Blunk. I live at 1356 Duck Road in Duck. I'm a resident of Duck. I'm the Carolina Dunes Association President, and I'm the Duck HOA Forum Leader/Coordinator. As background, the Duck HOA Forum was created over a year ago to facilitate communications between the various Duck HOA organizations. There are 60-plus such organizations. The forum has an advisory group who screens topics and issues. The advisory group conducted three Zoom meet-and-greet meetings with all of you. Three main topics and issues were discussed at these meetings. They were town budgets, encouraging non-resident property owner participation in town discussions, and traffic congestion. After the Zoom meetings, it was suggested that town council appoint a council member to be a liaison with the forum, similar to what I think you have done with the Duck Business Community. There are two agenda items tonight of interest to the forum. Agenda item 6D discusses appointing a council member to be a liaison with the forum. We are strongly in favor of such an appointment. This would facilitate ongoing communications and cooperation between the forum and the town on topics and issues of common... I think Councilor Rob Mooney would be a good person to play this role if he is willing to do that. We urge you to make such an appointment. Agenda item 6E discusses pedestrian crossings and traffic flow. As we discussed in our Zoom calls, traffic congestion is a major and growing problem with the town. Traffic congestion is no longer limited to rental turnover days, and it adversely impacts employees, vendors, and businesses, as well as property owners and their guests. Many believe the large number of pedestrian crossings in Duck and the fact that vehicular traffic has to stop for each pedestrian crossing, Duck Road, both contribute to the increase in traffic congestion. We are strongly in favor of reviewing the original crosswalk assumptions versus today's traffic congestion reality and to review and study alternatives to improve traffic flow without sacrificing safety. We would like to participate in discussions and would also offer to assist with testing new ways to manage the crossings when traffic congestion builds. Lastly, I see interactive Zoom sessions will no longer be used for town council meetings. Many property owners are not able to attend meetings. They can send emails to you, as I am doing with this. However, many people prefer to verbalize their comments rather than write them in an email ahead of time. Unless there is some significant problem with using Zoom, I would ask that you reconsider its elimination in the spirit of encouraging more property owners to participate in town discussions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for reading those, Lori. Thank you to Stephen, Ron for their comments. Would anybody else like to address the council this evening? There being no one, we'll close public comments. We're going to go on to item number three, the Consent Agenda. This evening, it contains the minutes from the June 16th, 2021, mid-month meeting. Resolution 21-08, a resolution of the town council of the town of Duck, North Carolina, revising the contract and approval of the contracts between the town of Duck and Hoynes L.L.P. effective August 1, 2021, and authorize the town manager to execute the same. Let's all entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a mention of June 16th. We're extremely detailed and really well-done, and I always thank the town staff for the job they do to capture the detailed discussions we had, so thank you for those.
Any further comments? There being none, call for vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved, five to zero. This time, we'll go on to item number four, Special Presentation. Introduction swearing-in of Nathan Moffrey and Kelly Hill, Duck Police Department's newest police officers. I'd like to turn it over to Chief Chuck Appen.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, community members, and our town staff. It's my honor this evening to welcome Nathan Moffrey and Kelly Hill to our town of Duck family as our newest police officer. So, Officer Moffrey, if you would step forward. Nathan is joined this evening by his wife, Jamie, who also serves as a telecommunier here in Dare County, as well as their beautiful daughter, Chloe, who's here somewhere. Officer Moffrey was raised in Columbia, North Carolina, and attended basic law enforcement training at the Beaufort Community College in 2010. He then began his law enforcement career as a deputy sheriff in his home county of Terrell. From there, he served in both Washington and Dare County until coming to Duck with 12, excuse me, 11 years of service. When our team first learned Nathan was considering a change, they immediately jumped to action, knew he was the right officer to fill our opening, and as Lieutenant Clark and I interviewed Nathan, we also realized immediately that he was exactly what we were looking for in Duck. So, we're going to swear you guys in together. Kelly, would you please come up? Kelly is joined this evening in the audience by her lovely parents, Charles and Kim Hill, and happy retirement to mom there. I read that on Facebook this morning. Officer Hill grew up in Port Tobacco, Maryland, and graduated from Eastern Connecticut State University with a bachelor's degree in political science and history. She attended basic law enforcement training at Cape Fear Community College before beginning her career with the Dare County Sheriff's Office, where she spent the last six years before coming to us. Officer Hill comes to Duck with a stellar reputation as being a professional and self-driven law enforcement officer. She comes in every day with a smile and a great attitude, and in the short time she's been with us, she's become a vital member of our team, and we're really happy to have her. So also want to recognize her boyfriend, Tom Mears. Tom, would you like to... Who wants to pin the badge? Hope you're in the... So, the town leaders, so agree that those are both given at the same time? I'll hold the flag if you have...
Raise your right hand, and after I give the oath, say I will or I swear. I'm going to do them both at the same time. I, Nathan L. Moffrey, and I, Kelly D. Hill, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that I will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of this state, that I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice, and that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as police officer with the town of Duck Police Department according to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment, so help me, God. Congratulations.
Yeah. Quick, quick. Oh, that's great.
Yeah. Congratulations, Nathan and Kelly again. Chief? Chief? How's your relationship with Sheriff Doughty these days?
I didn't want to talk about that one here. He didn't tell me he loved you, but I didn't get a hug last time.
Item number five, old business. We have none at this time. Moving on to six, new business. Item number eight, discussion, consideration of authorizing a public hearing on Ordinance 21-04, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Duck, North Carolina, updating requirements to the enacted state of emergency proclamations and actions consistent with NCGS Chapter 166A. Joe, are you handling that?
Thank you, Mayor Kingston, members of council, members of the public with us this I'm not sure I have a whole lot to add to that introduction. You know, you have an ordinance before you. Since this is a section that does not deal with development, this isn't the type of ordinance that needs to go to the planning board or anything of that nature. But as you found as a council, particularly over the last year, there's been a need for the council to enact certain emergency provisions, the mayor enacting proclamations, instituting things. You know, we've used it to make things more flexible for businesses. We've used it to mirror limitations that the governor has put on people in North Carolina. And so, those are just examples of how this is used, but it's broader than that, because it can be used for any situation. Following a hurricane, as an example, there may be, following a major hurricane, a need to implement certain standards or provisions to help keep the community safe. In that light, these provisions, in adopting them, town attorney Robert Hobbs notified us just very recently that there have been some changes to the state standards in both 2019 and 2020, and that we needed to amend our ordinance to change those standards to, again, mirror the state requirements, and we have attempted to do that in the ordinance you have before you tonight. The ordinance contains, marked up in red, the changes that were made so that were consistent with the state regulations. And that's the sole intent of this, is just to update that section of the ordinance so that we're in good legal standing should we need to enact proclamations in the future. I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions that council members might have, and Mr. Hobbs is also available.
Any questions for Joe?
Pretty straightforward.
There being none, I'll entertain a motion to consider a public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize a public hearing on Ordinance 21-04, an ordinance of the town council of town of Duck, North Carolina, updating requirements to enact state of emergency proclamations and actions consistent with NCGS Chapter 166A.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll do a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, five to zero. Thank you, Joe. Again, item number six B, discussion, consideration of appointing or reappointing individuals to the Board of Adjustments. We have seven open positions. Six of the incumbents have opted to put their names back on to be reappointed, and we have three new appointees. I'm going to ask town attorney Robert Hobbs to help me on this from a standpoint of the voting, and when we get to the point of voting, I'm going to actually ask the town manager if he'll maintain the tally. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. So, your procedure, which you've used before, of course, to make appointments, says that to fill vacancies, the presiding officer, which would be the mayor, shall open the floor to nominations, whereupon the members shall put forward and debate the names of possible appointees. When the debate ends, the mayor would call a roll of the members, and each member shall vote. The votes shall not be tallied until each member has voted. The nominee who receives the highest number of votes shall be appointed. And you'll recall from past votes that this procedure does not require a nominee to receive a majority, so it's just the highest number. So if you have multiple people who are nominated, it's whoever's the top vote getter, regardless of whether that person received a majority or not. So, but in the case where there's more than one appointee, so here, depending on how you want to do this, you have either seven appointees or you have five plus two, so depending on how you want to structure that. If you have more than one appointee, each member shall have as many votes as there are positions to be filled. So, and a member may cast, here's all or any less than all their votes. In other words, each member gets seven votes, in this case, if you did all seven at the same time. And each member can cast one vote, three votes, up to seven. So it would also be up to you to decide how you want to do the alternate. The agenda summary information tells you how it's been done in the past. That is probably more custom than it is anything else, because I don't think that's necessarily required in the procedure for appointment. In fact, it's not mentioned at all. So you could, a couple of ways that I've thought of that you could do would be you could nominate all seven, and then you could decide ahead of time where the alternates would be selected. Would it be the, you know, number six and number seven positions? That would be one way to do it. You could do it the way you've done in the past. Or you could do two sets of procedures. One would be that you would first elect the five full-time members, and then you could have a second round of nominations and voting for the two alternates. So again, whatever your preference is, any of those would work, but like I said, if you do multiple positions, that's how the voting is. You would have seven votes per member, and then it would be up to seeing the total top vote-getters as being the ones that are selected or appointed.
Robert, if we do the latter approach, where we do five appointments to the board and then separately do two appointments as alternates, we would then get five votes on the first set and then two votes on the second set?
Exactly.
Would council like to pursue that approach? Or would you like to go for all seven and then determine the alternates from that seven that are picked?
Could I... I just want to ask a question. When was the last time, if anybody knows, when the Board of Adjustment met for any reason?
What was the question?
When was the last time they met?
Oh, okay.
And why?
Joe can handle it.
Last time they met was over two years ago, and it involved an appeal of a decision that the staff made.
Joe, they met this year?
Well, they met for a training session. Thank you. You know, they...
Yeah, I'm not talking about training.
We have had occasional training thing, but as far as an action meeting, it was over.
Yeah, I'm not talking about training. I'm talking about actual hearing something.
Was that training in advance, a potential appeal that didn't happen?
Yes, but it was also a time. You know, we do that every now and then, anyway, to try to, you know, to just at least keep things fresh in their minds a little bit, you know? So if and when they're called upon, they have some knowledge of the process and what they need to base their decisions on.
Historically, we have not had many appeals that the Board of Adjustments had to deal with, correct?
Pardon me?
Historically, we have not had that many appeals that the Board had to deal with?
We haven't had a lot of either appeals or variances over the years. You know, compared to many communities, we just simply don't get a lot of those types of applications.
So based upon that, I think our two options are we do five and two, or we do all seven. So what's the feeling of council? We'll do a consensus on that.
I'd like to see five and two.
Rob, how do you feel about that?
Five and two's fine with me.
Five and two's fine.
All right. So what we'll do is open it up for nominations for the five seats on the Board of Adjustments. I would like to start by nominating Olin Finch, who's been on the board for many years and is current chairman. Open for nominations?
Oh, go through all the nominations and then we'll vote?
That's right. You open up to the floor, all nominations are made. You should probably nominate at least five.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Robert Wetzel.
I'll nominate Ed Sadler.
I'll nominate Tom O'Brien.
I'll nominate William Yosi.
I'd like to nominate Carol Powell.
I'm sorry, that was Powell.
Powell.
Thank you.
And if it's okay to put another nomination on the floor, I'd like to nominate John Pucciano.
You're nominating John Pucciano?
Yes, John Pucciano.
I'd like to nominate Ed Sadler.
Oh, I get it already.
Oh, you did that already?
Yeah.
Sorry. I wasn't paying attention to that part.
No problem.
Reading.
If my tally's right, right now, we have seven nominations. Any other nominations, or we'll close the nominations? All right, the nominations are closed. Robert, would we vote for each individual separately?
I think what I would suggest, each member has seven votes that they can, five, I'm sorry, they can cast. So one way you could do it is go just down the row, and each person say who they're going to vote for, cast up to five votes.
All right.
And then we'll tally.
All right. All right. Who would like to start by casting their five votes?
I need to get the names again.
I'll start. All right. O'Brien, Wetzel, Finch, Powell, and Sadler.
Give the town manager time to catch up here. All right?
What was the last one you said?
Carol Powell. Oh, Ed Sadler, I'm sorry.
Who would like to cast their votes next?
I'll go next. Finch, Powell, Pucciano, Sadler, Wetzel.
Robert, would you like to go next?
Oh, sure.
Monica?
Oh, did you ask me?
No, it doesn't matter. It's just whoever.
Oh, okay. Would you like to go next, Rob?
I'll go.
Okay. I'll go with Finch, Sadler, O'Brien, Wetzel, and Powell.
Robert?
Yosi, O'Brien, Pucciano, Sadler, and Wetzel.
I'd like to cast my vote for Finch, Sadler, Powell, Wetzel, and O'Brien.
Mr. Hobbs, you concur?
I do.
All right, did everybody hear that? Finch, Powell, O'Brien, Wetzel, and Sadler. So now we'll open up nominations for the remaining, which would be Brooks, Flowers, Yosi, and Pucciano. You'll get two votes, and we need to select two. And with that, I'll open up nominations, and I'll nominate John Pucciano.
I'll nominate John also.
I'll nominate David Flowers.
Sandy, what was, who was your nomination? Sandy?
He had the same.
Pucciani.
Same nomination.
Same. Okay, repeated, okay. Yes. All right, thank you.
Any other nominations?
No, John would have been my nomination as well, John Pucciano.
So I think we have three nominations. We have Pucciano, Massey, Yosi, and Flowers. So we have three candidates. These are for the alternates, and we each get two votes. And who'd like to start the voting?
I'll go first.
All right.
I'll vote for Pucciano and Flowers.
Pucciano and Flowers.
Pucciani and Flowers.
Flowers and Yosi.
I'll go for Pucciano and Yosi.
I'm sorry.
I mean, Pucciano and Yosi.
Yosi.
Top two are Pucciano and Flowers. Mr. Hobbs, concur?
I concur.
Thank you, council. Town manager, will you notify, or either that or Joe, notify the Board of Adjustments? Congratulations.
Absolutely.
All right, going on to item number 6C, discussion consideration of authorizing the town manager to execute an installment purchase agreement for the purchase of five police vehicles and mobile and portable radios for the police and fire departments in accordance with the approved full year 2021-22 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as part of our budget process, you're aware that we build in that we're going to use debt proceeds to purchase some capital items. In this case, five police cars, and that's two new police cars for new officers, three replacements in accordance with the replacement schedule that's laid out in CIP. And then the other project was to replace all of our fire and police radios all in one shot. Council, you had a lot of discussion about that. So once the budget was approved, we went out with an RFP to lenders that we're familiar with. We went directly to them, asking them for proposals. And we also posted the RFP on our website as for our policy, our practice. We received five replies back, and I, in your agenda package, there was a memorandum from me laying out kind of what the RFP was all about, and I gave you a copy of the RFP as well. And then the second page of that was the summary of the proposals received. We received four proposals from banks, and then one from an organization called Bank Funding LLC. And as I made a phone call to find out who they were, because I'd never heard of them before, turns out it's, they're basically a lending broker, so they're not a direct lender. Our RFP specifically said we're looking for proposals from lenders. So that Bank Funding LLC would place the loan prior to closing with a bank that they work with regularly. This one would have been a bank out of Florida. Had some conversation with Mr. Hobbs. The RFP was, didn't define what lender meant, but if you use the standard dictionary definition of lender, it's one that lends money. So for that reason, considering them to be non-responsive. So even though their interest rate is nine basis points better than the next, really not responsive, and only had, when I asked for a list of references, I was only able to get one that they had done business with in North Carolina. I did check with a contact that used to work with the LGC, and they had never heard of them before either. So comfort level, I think, is worth nine basis points. So the, they were at 1.13%. PNC was the next lowest bidder, at 1.22% for this three-year installment finance. So we just need the council's approval of PNC proposal and authorization for me to execute that with them when the time is right. We're not, we're not ready to spend the money yet. So we're not, I'm not going to, we're not going to move to closing immediately. They'll preserve the interest rate in accordance with their proposal, and then we can move towards closing.
Any questions for Drew?
I'm sorry if I missed it, but do, how long can we wait for, to, before we execute a loan?
I believe theirs is 60 days.
Okay, thank you.
And if we need more time, if we wanted to extend that, it's a phone call.
And they'll, they'll honor the rate?
Based on the relationship we have. We have a long-term relationship with PNC.
And I was going, you kind of alluded to it, thank you for that, about the local government commission and how they felt about a lending broker as opposed to a bank. And it seems to be the consensus that they really.
They didn't have an opinion one way or the other. They just never heard, never heard of it before.
Okay.
The individual that I have contact with, he's retired from the LGC, but had been there for years.
Okay.
They'd never heard of the organization, not that it hadn't been done before, right?
Sure.
They had never heard of the bank funding organization, right? But it had been done before, right?
Oh, it had been. You can, it's not against the rule.
And it's worth noting that these, these type of loans and type of borrowing is not subject to LGC approval. It doesn't meet any of the thresholds.
Oh, thank you.
So we're, we're able to do, to issue this, this level of debt for this purpose without having to go to the LGC.
After we get our loan, how long is it going to take him to get these radios into our hands?
The radios are in our hands. Some are in the process of being installed. I think programming is going to be one of the hitches in the giddyup, but they're, Deputy Chief Bachelet is working on that. It's incredible, he's incredibly organized when it comes, when it comes to this stuff. So they're, they're getting them, so they have everything in, it's just a matter of now getting it, getting it programmed. The biggest holdup is going to be getting police cars. They're just, of course, the whole, the whole car industry right now is a little wonky anyway, but even before that, the chief was told it would likely be November before we saw vehicles here.
Are we purchasing the same cars, chief?
Yes.
And I assume the first two will go to the two new officers? Do you have cars for them now?
Yeah, do we have something for them to ride in?
A bike.
So one of the officers that we swore in today is a replacement. So we have a vehicle, and then the police department does have a pickup truck that either lieutenant or the chief can drive, and a marked patrol unit would be put into patrol units. And then beyond that, we'll, a horse or bicycle or something.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Drew? There being done, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town manager to execute an installment purchase agreement for the purchase of the five police vehicles and mobile and portable radios for the police and fire departments with the PNC bank.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? There being done, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Going on to item number 6D, discussion consideration of appointing a member of the town council to serve as a liaison to the Duck HOA Forum. Let me, let me start this conversation. This came up as a result of a inquiry to the town and the council from several members of the HOA Forum. Basically, a three or four-page email, raising a lot of questions. It was subsequently responded to by our town manager, and in there, we had basically said that town manager and myself would be glad to meet with them, discuss any questions they might have based upon the response. We, of course, saw the letter and the response. They came back and took us up on that, and we set up a series of Zoom meetings where, in fact, all five council members had an opportunity to talk with several members of the Forum. And Monica and I took the first Zoom call. Nancy and Sandy took the second, and Rob took the third call. In my conversation, I said, perhaps, because we were thinking about the Duck Community and Business Alliance, that, you know, perhaps if this was a formal organization, we could set up a liaison from the council to interact with them, and basically, as they had issues or questions, come through that person. Since then, there's been some exchange of correspondence. I had asked for a charter and objectives, and they came back, and several times have said, you know, this is an informal organization. Tonight, we heard two public comments, one saying we never heard of the Forum, the other one supporting the liaison approach. So it's on the agenda tonight for an open discussion and see where, in fact, council wants to take this. My concerns are that even though I think it's important to have an outreach to the community, this is an informal organization. How many other informal organizations would also want that, that contact with the council? We do with the DCBA, but that actually turns out to be one meeting a year at their annual meeting presenting kind of town activities, and they are sponsorship of several of our events, including the Jazz Festival. So what we want to talk about tonight is next steps. Do we, in fact, want to recognize this group? There are several concerns about it, or in fact, do we want to look at a different approach or another alternative? And I did have some, you know, discussion with the town manager that, you know, we're going to have a new council sitting in December. We don't know who the members will be. Perhaps this is something that, in fact, a new council should deal with as a, do their organization in December. So with that, I'm going to open it up for discussion with council, and certainly, town manager wants to weigh in. He's welcome.
Well, based on the, on the conversations that I had with them via the Zoom meeting, one of the big questions that they had, which Drew has already answered, about trying to figure out a way for non-resident property owners to vote in a local election, is just not something that's, that's doable for various reasons. That being said, these are still, this is still a significant group of people in the town. And I've said this before, our job is to, to take care of the people in the town. We have a constituency which we're responsible to. So my opinion is that we don't drag our feet on this and leave it for the next council. I think we should do it now.
I'll just add some history for the DCBA organization. That was originally the Duck Civic Association before we became a town, and then when we became a town, it kind of morphed into the Duck Community and Business Alliance as a way to have an offshoot liaison group. The DCBA does, as Mayor mentioned, meet annually, and they really got focused on the Build the Bridge effort. And they were, that was really became a primary focus for the DCBA. They had fundraising, or they had dues that they, that folks paid into, and the money that they amassed, and I think they still have, you know, they do still have money in their, in their account, has been historically for public relations, information gathering, things revolving around supporting the Build a Bridge project. As the mayor said, they ask for the mayor or someone from the town to present to their annual meeting, and that's about where it is. It's a fairly dormant organization, other than those two events that happen. It's Community and Business Alliance, so the idea was for community, you know, and the businesses. But it's not, it's not particularly well, you know, known, or, you know, it's not a robust organization. The Duck HOA Forum, rather, the homeowners association forum that Ron Blunk has put together quite well, he's been, I've, I've known him in the community for quite some time, and knew that he was really good at organizing. He was an organizer of where he has a property in Colorado, and then he brought his organizational skills to Carolina Dunes. Carolina Dunes, like many of the older communities in town, are not required to have dues and pay into a formal organization, say like Sanderling, for example, which is in their deed because they have amenities, and Tuckahoe and Ocean Crest and others. There's other, lots of places, Carolina Dunes being the largest, but Bayberry, Duck Ridge Shores, any of the older homeowners associations, it's all voluntary. It's all, and so dues are voluntary, you know, and they're loosely organized. So Ron did an exceptionally good job. I saw his, the efforts that he has done for Carolina Dunes over the years, and really galvanized the population there, both locals and visitors, rather, non-resident property owners. And so then it came to the next step where they were going to organize all these various homeowners associations, or at least look into a formal organization. As one of the leaders, if you will, of the Seahawk Homeowners Association, of which, where I live in Seahawk, I've been serving as the president of Seahawk, so I've gotten the emails on a routine basis, and the information, I'm participating quite on, often on the email chain, as is the other two people in Seahawk that are associated. Doesn't have a problem with having as many people on the email chains as, as necessary or that want to be, and the whole idea is that the information that they gather as a group, they will push out to. And the whole idea is that the information that they gather as a group, they will push out to the rest of the, of the community. Those different Seahawk, for example, or Carolinians will push their information out to their, to their residents. So it's sort of disseminating of information, keeping things centralized, keeping things organized. So I've been very interested and pleased with the amount of communication that the forum does to the different organizations. I was a little surprised by the public comment that we received tonight that says that folks in a maybe more organized community, such as Ocean Crest, have never heard of the organization. So that, for me, I, I never thought of that before, but, so that's where I'm stumbling just a bit. I'm sure that the ones that have professionally managed associations must have some kind of invitation to participate. It's certainly not excluding them. So I don't know where the disconnect has come. And I certainly think that's something that we could, you know, ask of the, of the forum to see, you know, why isn't everybody involved? I mean, to me, that, that just seems natural because it is a way for people to share information. And thinking about some of the emails I've seen, I, as I speak, I remember them talking about whether or not you had, they had, say, for example, insurance for the board of directors, one example of a comment. And people were weighing in, the different associations were saying, well, we do, we don't. And it did seem to me that the more organized ones like Sanderling responded and other people, we do, we don't, we do, we don't. So there were some professionally managed associations in there. So it seems to me that we would want to, if we do embrace the forum, which I don't have a problem with at all, that we would want to make sure that everybody knew about it, everybody was felt included in it. Certainly no one should feel excluded. I don't have a problem moving forward with the liaison. I think it might be helpful to establish some guidelines about what the expectations are for that position. And I did find it interesting that they were asking for Councilman Mooney to be the person. But that's in of itself, just obviously, maybe they all got together and voted on that. I, I didn't see that email, but that, that certainly, it was interesting to me as well. But I don't have any problem with appointing a person to the forum and participating. I just would want it not to be, you know, too burdensome for the person involved and kind of just maybe lay out some guidelines. So that's how I feel and thanks for the opportunity to give a little history on that.
Additional input, comments, discussion?
You want to go, Sandy?
I just want to say, I'm a member of the Tuckahoe Homeowners Association and I'd never heard of them until they met with the council. And in matter of fact, there's two people on our board that are members of that. And I just feel that, you know, there's no organization there, there's no charter. We want to give them, they want someone from us to be there. I want to start an organization and I want a council member appointed to my group. You know, that's what we're asking for, is non-chartered groups asking for a liaison to the council. I just don't feel that if they're not organized and they'll have some kind of agreement, that we shouldn't give them anything until they have that.
Well, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this since our meeting with them via Zoom. And I don't think that the, I actually like the idea of having a designated liaison, but I actually think it should be two liaisons, and I'll tell you why. I, I think that there are a lot of groups, the DCBA, the DMA, multiple property owner associations, Restaurant Association, Home Builder Group. We have a lot of groups that are chartered and organized and represent a significant group of members that have common interests and eventually come forward with a unified voice or suggestion or question, whatever it might be. And that's a lot, that's a lot of liaison work. So I think we would be better served to designate two individuals on the council. I think it should sit with the position of the pro tem and then have an additional council member. And I think that that's valuable because I think it's very important when you have an audience with a group like that, that the group is very clear that you're speaking on behalf of the council and not as an individual. And if there's two people, I think that comes across that it's, it's a much more formal process. Plus it's, it could potentially be a lot of people to deal with. One of the things Sandy and my session with them ran short. And one of the things I really wanted to try to understand about this group was just what about all the current organizations and avenues that are available to participate? What was going awry that they felt that they needed yet another layer of, of organization? But we didn't have, we didn't have time to discuss it. And since their letter around the budget, you know, I've talked to various people who are non-residents and residents, some who sort of heard through the grapevine that this thing was happening and other people who were familiar with it. And then I was like you, Monica, I was surprised that Ocean Crest knows nothing about it. So what was sort of clear to me that night is for as much of communication that this group is having, is that they don't, they do not speak in one voice because that came out in our conversation. Somebody actually raised some objection towards the end, saying, I want to be clear that what has been said tonight is not my opinion. So it felt to me that while this is a valuable vehicle, that they have some organizing to do so that they can make sure that they have broad participation and that when they come forward and want to have dialogue with the town, whether it's with council or staff, that they're doing it in a cohesive kind of way. I'm not getting that from them yet. But I think, you know, they're new, you know, they, they, you know, they, they shared a little bit of what sort of sparked their, sparked their interest in sort of getting together was during the pandemic when everything was shut down and people were really sort of disconnected from one another. I think people were trying to do all sorts of things to stay in connection with one another, which is great. And like you said, you know, the whole town, I mean, the whole town is built on having multiple ways for our stakeholders to participate. But I really, I'm just curious, what about the DCBA or all the other ways that they can participate? They just feel like that's failing them. So unlike, so I'm not ready to make a decision this evening about whether or not this is the right thing to do. I actually think that this is something that should be discussed at the retreat level. Because I think we need to, I think it would be valuable for the town to look at all the ways that we communicate with our stakeholders, what's working great, what needs to be improved upon. And then really sort of fleshing out, you know, if we're going to establish some liaisons, like how is that going to work? So there isn't overwhelm and that it's clear for all parties what that exactly means. Those are, those are sort of my thoughts after that meeting.
Can I just do one more clarifying thing? The reason that we met three different times was because we can only meet two times. I mean, two council members can meet together, otherwise it's considered a meeting. So we did the two of us and then these guys and then one because we couldn't do three and two or all five of us because it would be considered a meeting. So I just wanted to make sure the general public understood why we didn't all meet together. And, and have a, and I'll just add that the, you know, the communications are organic, they're email driven. Obviously, everybody's away. And I, and I'm just speculating too, that people feel that it's easier to kind of go neighborhood to neighbor, neighbor to neighbor, and not ask questions that maybe they think or someone would think they didn't, weren't informed questions. I, I don't know, but it seems like there's a comfort level with being able to just share an email with your neighbor and your homeowners association and having it filter around that way. But it seems like all the meetings or the participation would probably be virtual, just by nature, the fact that everybody is out of town. But again, that was my question about the, about exactly what the, what the meetings would be like.
Well, I don't think we should get hung up on process here. This is, in my opinion, a significant portion of stakeholders from this town. And they have concerns and whether or not they have been able to figure out another avenue to bring their concerns to the town is not really of any moment. We've, we've had issues here in the past that excluded people, that have caused people to have serious problems in their lives. And nobody seemed to know about it. So the point is, this is an opportunity for us, not only for them to get information from us, but us to get information from them. And so we, everybody learns and in my opinion, that means everybody gains by it. I don't think that there's any reason to get, get stuck on they don't have a charter or they don't have whatever it is that, that the DCBA has. They'll get it, they'll figure it out. I just think that it's foolish for us to ignore a significant portion of stakeholders because of that.
Let me, let me just address the liaison position. And I've been the liaison to the DCBA for many years. It really doesn't exist as a liaison position. I mean, once a year, they ask us to attend the annual meeting and make a presentation on town activities. It's more participation in their meeting more than a liaison. I think, I think we misuse the term liaison. I mean, I'd be in favor to actually eliminating that with the DCBA. I'll give another good example in that we set up the Duck Merchants Association. And yes, we helped them get organized. If anybody should have a liaison to council, the business people should probably have one, right? And yet we give them staff support, but we don't have a liaison to the DMA. And, and how many organizations are going to come forward like the HOA Forum and say, do we want a focal point into the council? I think we entertained emails, so we obviously entertained the email from the HOA Forum and gave them a very lengthy response and actually had sessions with them. And to me, I think our, our job, all as council people is outreach as well as responding to people who come to us and, and bringing those issues forward to the council. I mean, I think we're all liaison in one form or another. This organization doesn't represent all the HOAs and Duck. And it is not a formal organization. I mean, there's, there's over 60 or 70 or 80 homeowners associations. They're not all participating in this, so it really is not, we're not getting a united word from these people. And within these HOAs, and Sandy raised the point, I know for an fact, in Tuckahoe, none of the homeowners in Tuckahoe HOA even know the forum exists and/or no one's been solicited for opinions that might be expressed by this forum. To me, I see really no value in liaison. And yes, I think any council member can interact with any organization and represent the council and, and bring it back and have discussions. And so for me, I see really no value other than we give people email opportunities, we give them public comment opportunities. Tonight, we had two public comments, you know, one kind of for and one against. So they have an open forum to the council. I, I just don't see at this point in time why we need to go out and create a special position. And yes, it should be more than one person perhaps, you know, maybe it should be multiple people because people interpret conversations differently. But I, I just don't think that at this point in time, I think we can communicate, we do communicate with this organization as it is. But to me, there's a lot of other organizations that are going to want the same type of treatment. And I'm not sure council basically has the ability to do that. And once again, I would still say we're going to set a new council in December. It's, it probably is a good retreat question, but I would even question why we have a liaison to the DCBA, quite honestly. And anybody that, that contacts council, the town manager and/or any individual in council, you know, we all know about that and we all respond. We have a united response. And I, I really think that's the way we should be doing it. It's not that in fact, we're not listening to the, to the public. If they have that perception, then they in fact, haven't tried to reach out to us. But from these individuals, they did reach out to us and we did give them a, what I consider to be a pretty lengthy response. So I don't really support creating a liaison tonight. I think it needs more discussion and I think we really need to look at function of council when it comes to outside organizations. You know, we all have internal responsibilities with other, you know, like the tourism board, but these are established and these are, you know, participation. But so, I mean, I, I really think that, I see no value tonight in rushing off to create a liaison position. I really think that two things, the new council needs to have a better definition and discussion. They should make really that call, not this council, you know, putting them in a position for the next, you know, that's going to happen in about four months. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on this whole thing. And that doesn't say we don't continue to communicate with them, respond to them. I mean, we've had responses after the fact, after we sent that letter. So I think council is responsive and will be responsive. So that's kind of my position on this.
So you said that there's, from your homeowners association, there's nobody that's involved in this?
I'm sorry.
Did you say that from your homeowners association, as far as you know, there's nobody that's involved in this?
There's a couple of officers involved, but there's nobody in the homeowners association. That hasn't gone into the homeowners association. You know, we have, we've had no correspondence who are part of that forum. We have no idea what in fact-
So, so-
Tuckahoe is part of it, but you just haven't seen anything from them?
Correct. I mean, our president participated in-
Right, that's what I, I mean, but that's, that's not what you said.
No.
No.
Same thing I said.
That's not-
I said there were two people on our board that represent Tuckahoe according to that. But they've never told the homeowners that there is a forum out there that they're representing us at.
That's interesting.
That's the point. Yes, our president was, was in with Ron Blunk on those calls. And one of the other board members was on in the original email. What we're saying is there's no communication down. Okay, we know because we're on the council, right? You go ask my neighbors, they have no idea what it even is or if they were a member of it or in fact, you know, what our role is. And I think you saw that from Ocean Crest. I mean, they were coming back saying basically they were even unaware of it. So, I mean, it's a group of people, I think Monica said it right, that organized and actually raised some good questions to council. But I'm saying it's not universal. And it's not necessarily representative of the many homeowners associations in Duck.
Nothing that we do here is universal. And as Monica said, the, the DCBA is kind of a two times a year thing and not really, they don't really do anything of substance when you do meet with them. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know about that because I don't go to their meetings anymore, but yeah.
So the point is that this is, again, I'll say this again, this is an opportunity for us to open up a channel and learn from them as well as they can learn from us. And I think that it's, it's kind of silly for us to waste an opportunity.
I have to say that, again, not knowing exactly what the role would be, I do like your idea of two people because then it's, then you're not meeting because you've only done two out of the five. But you're also getting a little bit more depth and ears and expects, you know, things. I, I do agree with, with Rob that you don't, I, I like the idea of getting words out to the homeowners and to the, all population of Duck, all stakeholders of Duck in as many ways as possible. I don't object to establishing some kind of communication or some kind of connection. If you don't like the word liaison, I can certainly understand why because it does get a little overused. Because I think that the, the alternative is to kind of say, no, right now, tabling it, agreed, that it might be better for a future council. But, but I don't, I, I don't think there's any harm in being involved in- But, but I don't, I, I don't think there's any harm in being involved in whatever that means. I mean, as I've mentioned before, I'm involved in the email chains now because I'm on the email list. I mean, it, it, it's not, but I don't know exactly what, what, what the next steps would be or whatever, but it just seems like if you, if we had a council person, two council people, I like the idea of two, that are available to feel like they have a direct connect, I don't know. I mean, I, but I will also say that I agree that there's, you know, that it's a great retreat topic because we talked about this, that, and maybe it came up in, in our meeting with them or somewhere here, where how can we get more? Yes, you can't vote. Thank you for all the research on that. That was something I knew, but I didn't know it as well as I know it now. Why? But you can only vote in one community generally, you know, so people could, could move their vote to here if they, you know, wanted to split their vote, if they were in two different places, if it was a couple, they could, one person could vote here, but not at home, wherever that might be. So it's possible to vote here if you, but you can only vote one place. But what I was going to say on that was the survey idea, that came up in one of our conversations and that seemed to be a really nice way. We've used it before here where, you know, we've tapped into the public opinion and people are kind of used to it, you know, you know, filling out a quick question, how do you feel about X, Y, or Z? And to me, that's a really neat way to tap into the pub, to public. You know, whether we want to differentiate between owners of property versus vacationers versus business owners, certainly that could be done with a survey as well. But I mean, there are other ways besides this forum to get input from non-resident voters, if you will. And I, I like to just say that, that this council or that this community, this town does represent or, and should represent all the stakeholders and tries to continually do that. It's always been an important part of being in this town, as is noted in our vision statement and, and, and pretty much a lot of our ongoing discussion. But I don't object to, to the liaison idea, if we don't want to call it that, a, a person. It would be nice to know exactly what it would entail, but I don't, I don't like to miss an opportunity to connect with the public at large.
Well, we're not shutting off communications to any organization or any group of people. I mean, they've obviously, without a liaison, are communicating with the council today and communicating with the town. So, you know, liaison or not, we're entertaining the comments that, that come from them and come from the general public. I mean, anytime, anytime during the given year, we get a lot of emails from a lot of people and we respond to them all. I mean, that's, that's, that's our position basically is to respond to the public in total. We don't care if they're a property owner or a non-resident property owner, you know, even visitors, businesses, you know, we have to treat them equally. And I, I just don't see why we do not respond, you know, in a, in a very, basically council way. I mean, we responded to their comments and, you know, yes, it came out of a suggestion I made. Maybe I'm sorry I made that suggestion, but I think they should feel free to come to any council member, any council meeting, make any public comment, send any email, and they're going to get attention like any other group or any other individual in this town. I just don't see why we single out this one particular group. And I think, quite honestly, with the DCBA, we basically tell them we're no longer going to have a liaison, but they can deal with council and we'd be glad to present at their annual meeting. And we go about the job of governing and, and entertaining, you know, comments that come in.
Yeah, and I think this did get sparked maybe, like you said, from the pandemic, you know, from, but, and need to, you want to communicate. But then there were a lot of detailed questions that came around budget time. And there was a lot of education of the public. I think the questions that came up, correct me if I'm wrong, we put them on the website. I mean, we, we responded in a very thorough way to every question that was posed by the, by the Duck Forum, HOA Forum. And that was really beneficial, maybe Q and A almost type of thing, you know, in terms of questions that people might have. Because there's a lot to grasp in, particularly in a budget, but a lot of these issues that we talk about, can, you need, you know, you need to hear it a few times or you need to see it a few ways and, and anyway, I, I think that, yes, I totally agree with you. I think if anything, that the ability to meet with the forum folks, the, we all met one-on-one as best we could. We had to do it in three separate meetings, but everybody was interested in meeting with them, everybody took the time and responded and was very engaged. So I, I, I don't think there's any doubt that, I don't disagree with you. I mean, we're going to respond to anybody that comes to us. I just don't know how hard it would be to be a connection to this forum if it's just all on email. So I, I, that's why I didn't think it was that big of a deal. But honestly, I don't know exactly what they're, what they're looking for, but I, you know, I don't have a problem with continuing conversation. But anyway.
Any additional comments?
Just on what Monica just said about what they're looking for, I think that would be a step that we should know before we appoint someone.
Maybe we could just ask them what they're looking for?
Yeah. Somehow they'd have to give us something, what they're looking for.
And I do think, I mean, I, you know, I, I said it before, but I, I do think that there are some groups that if we're going to have, you know, some sort of an outreach liaison or a community liaison whose purpose is to meet with specific interest groups that it, it shouldn't just be for one specific group. You know, when someone comes up and stands up in public comment and they say, I'm here representing the home builders, that's very clear. We know, okay, that is a bona fide organization and they're standing up and they're, they're saying the party line and their, their position on maybe whatever is up for public discussion. Somebody stands up from the DMA and they say, you know, this is a request coming from the business community. We're clear that it's from everyone. That's very different than a single builder or a single business. And I, I'm just, I don't have the level of assurances right now that, that they are speaking for a majority of people, but many of their comments saying are, are suggesting that they speak for every non-resident property owner, and they do not. They do not. I mean, and the, one of the things that they said that, you know, was the most shocking to me was that they said, all non-resident property owners feel like second-class citizens. And I know for a fact that that is not true. I know dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of people who are non-resident property owners and not once in all the time that I have lived here have they ever communicated feeling like that. They've had questions, they've had comments, they've participated or not participated in a lot of the things that the town has done, but not once have they said that they felt like second-class citizens. And so, you know, you know, if that, you know, if that's what they're presenting, then that's, that's not, that's not something that's felt by everybody that doesn't live here. So I think all of their comments are valuable. I was, I was glad to have the conversation. We didn't really have a whole lot of time to get through everything, but was glad to have the conversation and welcome everybody, you know, submitting their comments and their thoughts individually. But if they're going to get together as a forum, then they need, in my opinion, they need to do their work and make sure that they have broad representation and that everybody that is participating in that understands, you know, what their mission is, what their objectives are, so that when they come forward and say, I represent the non-resident property owner forum, that they had their chance. You know, they had their chance to participate. If they chose not to, so be it. But if they had their chance to participate, then, you know, the group goes forward and they speak their, you know, decision. That's a democracy.
Would it make sense to ask the forum to come back and see what the, two things, that see what they're envisioning for a, you know, for this communication channel, what they're looking for? And also to just have some information about their outreach to all communities? Does that make sense?
It's fine for me. I, I mean, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to establish a liaison, but I don't want to extend this meeting another half an hour. So if you want to just get back with them and communicate with them and see what they're going to, what they want and instruct them a little bit about organizational things that are missing from them, let's do it.
Okay.
Just so you know, I requested of Ron prior to this meeting, I said basically, you know, we'll take this under consideration. Can you give me a charter, give me objectives? And about the organization, he came back and said it's an informal organization, not everybody is a member, you know, no objectives, you know, issue to issue. So we can ask again, but I think that's the response we got. It's, by his own words, it's an informal organization.
Well, we should at least ask them what they're asking for, for liaison then. I mean, what, what's the vision there? So we know exactly what we might be.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Yes.
They've asked for a liaison, which is a very formal thing, and that, I think we're struggling a little bit with that. How about if there is a member or two of council that wishes to be in the role of the communication link that I'm hearing that that's valuable to you? And help guide them to the point where a future council would be able to say, yes, you have a charter, yes, you represent a broad constituency, then you work with them, coach them, guide them to the point where then a future council could appoint a liaison, but just by consensus, I don't think you need to have a vote or anything like that. But just if there are two people that are willing to say, yeah, I'll, I'll meet with the, the folks that are in the forum and help guide them along the way. Just a suggestion.
How does council feel about that?
I'm happy to do it.
Me too.
Who else?
I have no, have no problem with that. You got two, you can't have three.
Yeah, you can't have three.
I'm, I'm happy with that.
So you're, so you're stepping up to do it?
Yeah.
All right. All right, by consensus, then Monica and Rob will reach out, have that discussion. You can kind of brief them, although they can watch the video and see where the discussion went. And we'll take it up at a future meeting.
We'll be happy, the staff is happy to provide any support you all need for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion before we close this subject?
Actually, one thought. Because the next natural person that is probably going to be part of the conversation or dragged into the conversation, whether they want to be or not, is our public information officer. So, you know, so anyway.
And I'm happy to, to work with the mayor Pro Tem and councilman Mooney to get any staff resource that we need.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Drew. Let's go into the next item, discussion regarding pedestrian crossings and traffic Mayor Pro Tem Thibodeau asked if we put this on the agenda. I think we've all been in this discussions individually with individuals and shop owners and restaurants and visitors and members of the Duck community. Just no doubt, this is unprecedented with respect to traffic this year. Our chief presented last council meeting, I think, very well, a lot of the issues and I think we're well aware of the issues. It's, it's just traffic volume, it's crosswalks, it's other towns' actions, other counties' actions. So I'm going to let Monica open up with her statement because you wanted to put it on the agenda, so I think I'll let you lead.
Thank you. Yes, I asked to put this on the agenda because we've had so much public comment about traffic. And last month, we got an excellent presentation from the chief of police regarding, you know, because he's hearing it as well and he probably may be more than, than a lot of people. It's certainly been, it's not a new issue, but this year seems to be just totally exacerbated by, like you said, a lot of factors. So I thought it was beneficial to have an open conversation. We're not going to solve anything tonight, of course, but see, you know, what people's thoughts are. I remember, I mean, this isn't a new issue and I brought this up when we had a, when we had VHB, our engineering, talking about the latest phase of, and all the work that's hopefully going to happen with the brick project. You know, when we had his, their ear, I said, you know, while they're looking at the engineering of all this, can you please revisit the crosswalks and just see? Because again, these crosswalks were developed with our pedestrian plan. Some were existing, some were added, if, going back in history now, and things have changed. Things have evolved. And a lot of people do look for the crosswalks, the number of crosswalks. We've seen some suggestions on, you know, different kinds of enhancing the crosswalks. Most recently, the, you know, the, we've got the really good solar lit ones that help at night, but, you know, maybe, and we've got some blinking lights up by the sand drilling end. So we've got a few varieties of, of, of things to assess, to help with the crosswalks. But that seems like an area that perhaps we could devote some resource to in, you know, formally with VHB. They're traffic engineers, they'll have a great amount of data. Now that we have really, you know, more and more accurate counts, we've got, just got new information that we didn't have two, three years ago. It just keeps getting more and more enhanced. On top of that, you've got, it doesn't take anybody just to drive north to Corolla and see the development that's going on up there. And there's more to happen. There's more off-road development, but there's a whole lot in Corolla on the paved area that is going to be continuing to be developed, way more than what we have in Duck. That affects everybody in Duck that's north of this, of the town because it just bottlenecks until you get, it's like going through an eyedropper, no, no, no surprises there. And, you know, talking about the bridge, which is DCBA's project, and we've, I've been a proponent of the bridge for so long and, and gone to many meetings in Raleigh, I've, you know, bought the signs, you know, we've, we've, we've done studies that were even, that predate, you know, that were just sort of informal before we had people like VHB to do traffic studies because DOT was seriously looking at four-laning Duck, I mean, Route 12. But four-laning really means five because you got to put a turning lane in there. So, you know, but there's, you know, you could turn, put a turning lane all the way through sand, through southern shores, and that would help with some of the lefts and things like that, but, and maybe allow some evacuation route. But certainly making five lanes into the town and through southern shores would, would devastate that community and certainly just, you just couldn't fit it on our, our land in through town. So it doesn't really solve that, that bottleneck, if you will. Traffic, to me, it's, would show good faith to the very frustrated folks that deal with going through town to at least put some money toward a, a real study. And that would take traffic engineers. And so that, you know, I would propose that we, that we allocate some resources to that, show the, show the community the information and kind of bring everybody along with us. So that's really where I was going with this. It's something that, as I said, we're not going to solve this overnight. People are always coming up with ideas, you know, flyovers, jug handle bridges, as you mentioned last time, and, and those kind of things are just, they're just not going to happen. But there are probably some steps we can take, and it's going to cost money, let's just face it. It's going to cost money to do the study. If it's, if it's barricading the sidewalks of Duck, you know, then, then that's what it is. But it's going to, you know, are we going to get Jersey barriers and are then we're going to have people hopping over? But whatever we have, it's going to take a little resource, it's going to take some investigation. And I frankly would like to, to get, to get going on that, but we need some professional help. So that's, that sounds funny, but it's true. That's my thought.
Couple, couple of comments just to what you're suggesting. First of all, an update on the bridge. Transportation Department basically is still planning, starting construction, it's a longer-term solution, but starting construction next year. That's still in their, in their plan. And built in, built into the plan is the lawsuit, so, that they're anticipating. So if that happens, that would certainly be a longer-term good news. So if that happens, that would certainly be a longer-term good news. I like the idea of re-engaging an engineer, and I think we have a little bit of, we really need to address that quickly from a standpoint if we want to catch pedestrian traffic. I think we got a lot of control on, you know, the cars, and we could do that turning and all that type of thing, but if we want to catch that pedestrian traffic, we almost have to do it this month. Similar to the study we did prior to the comprehensive pedestrian plan, where were people crossing, how many people were crossing, you know, the bike traffic, and we almost need to recreate that study that we did many years ago, because obviously the volumes have changed. And, but time is a little bit of the essence here, because we'd probably want to capture it in August if we could. So I don't know if we could engage or have a conversation with VHB, who did the prior study, and to see if in fact, we could at least initiate some level of analysis. I mean, we got a lot of numbers, as Monica said, you know, and the cameras give us the traffic counts, and the 65% we send on to Corolla every day, and, but I mean, the pedestrian piece would be a really important piece, and we could capture that.
To that point, I met with Drew last week to talk about this, and his suggestion, it seems, is a good starting point, and it's something that we could do almost immediately. He suggested putting a camera up, I think it was in front of roadside, was it, or a little further down, where you can cap, he could capture on that camera, I think, four or five crosswalks. And we can, we'll have the data inside of a week by looking at what comes up on those cameras, and then try to figure out what the best way to handle that is. But as you said, it's going to cost money. Eventually, what I think will happen here is we're going to end up having to have automated crossing signals, the walk-don't-walks that you see in the city, or something, I'm sure that there's something that would be quaint enough to fit in with the town's image. It doesn't have to be the big yellow box hanging on the pole. But at least if we get started on it, by figuring out the numbers, I think that's the right thing to do.
I agree. That's a great idea. I wouldn't object to having a few cameras. I don't know what they cost, but, you know, it seems like we could put them at the entrance to town, and, you know, and then in the middle.
I think they can be done fairly reasonably, and it won't get all of them. So there are...
Thirteen, I think.
Thirteen plus, and then some that are outside of the village as well. The only advantage to trying to, or to contracting with a traffic engineer is we can tell them what we think the problem is, which is traffic backs up through southern shores, or it backs up north of the county line, and say to them, how do you determine what's causing that? And let them put their engineering minds on it. The cameras will be great to start to collect data. It really is going to take, I think, probably either a lot of cameras or a lot of people. And a lot of people can be done on a weekend. And it's, but that needs to be organized by an engineer, because it's, we need to count pedestrian crossings and the direction they're crossing. We need to count the number of cars that are turning left, turning right, entering from side streets, turning left, turning right, and then the number of cars that are through foot. Because all of that, all those turning movements of vehicles also backs up traffic. So, or slows traffic, not as significantly likely as the pedestrians that cross, and then 10 seconds later, another group of pedestrians cross, which we think is the problem. So I think there's a, I'd be willing to, you know, work with Joe, and we can reach out to Chris tomorrow and say, okay, how quickly can we spin up the point, or to get the data collection, and tell him we can put some resources to getting cameras in place? And then also, we can hopefully commit to getting human resources in terms of volunteers for a specified time on a weekend, because that seems to be the problem we're trying to solve, right? That's when the problem is the greatest, anyway. So we can get, you know, it'll take a couple of dozen people counting, I'm sure.
I might disagree with you there, because I think the issue is the weekdays. We know that in fact, the holiday, I mean, the weekends are going to be busy. There's more rentals, there's more people coming in, there's more traffic. But Monday through Friday, for the traffic to be backed up coming into Duck, I mean, that's very unusual. I mean...
Well, yeah, not unusual this year, but it's definitely been unusual for a year.
We could say, you know, we could certainly define the problem as traffic backs up, period, and let them figure it out. Then we'll need to have obviously more people doing counting.
Yeah.
Because you'll need to do it during weekdays, and then there are other factors that play into it, weather obviously plays into it.
I mean, our success in Duck has brought this on, from a standpoint of people want to come to Duck, not only on rainy days, but sunny days, because of the shops and the restaurants, and, you know, they can walk. I mean, we put the sidewalks in for safety, and now they use them. And...
It'd be great to have an explanation. And last Wednesday evening, I went to Corolla. It rained up there, so there was an event that we were going to attend. We came back and we stopped in traffic just north of the county line. And it was stopped until we got to Sunset Grill, stop and go, you get Sunset Grill, and then it opens up again. And it was rainy or drizzly, so there was not a lot of pedestrians out. So I don't, I don't understand it. And that's why I'm thinking that if we can have somebody, and I think there's a lot of us that could, we could make guesses, and probably make somewhat educated guesses based on our observations, but if we have an engineer to put it together, and then once we define the problem, then what's the solution?
There might also be some value in meeting with Southern Shores and Curtauck, maybe Kitty Hawk and that whole thing too, because I think some of the things that Southern Shores has done, you know, is pushing more traffic to 12, but you've still got people coming down those side streets, and, you know, from the west. And they got crosswalks also, and they also have a lot of places where they don't have crosswalks where people are crossing, because they want to get from the west side to the east side. And, you know, maybe we should plan a session with Southern Shores and Curtauck.
I mean, I agree with that. I think any full examination of this problem is going to require multiple people at the table. All the municipalities, everything that feeds into this structure that we have that is creating this. And, you know, the observations that, this is my thought, you know, the observations that people have this year are based on pandemic situation where traffic everywhere in the country is worse than it's ever been, because people aren't using mass transit, they're driving. So highways and byways everywhere are experiencing this. Just heard a discussion on this in Charlotte this past week. But it's the size of the homes that everybody has to check in and check out on essentially two days, maybe a little bit on a third day, as opposed to turnover happening seven days a week. It's the size of the homes, and every single bedroom, not being just one car for a house, but, you know, a 10-bedroom house has four or five cars, you know, a 25-bedroom house, God knows how many cars come with that. And it's not just the pedestrians, it's not just the left-hand turns, it's everything. It's workforce travel, it's travel messaging, it's the pandemic, it's a two-lane road that has basically been our road when we weren't even developed. And, you know, minus the addition of a turn lane and some pedestrian crossings in southern shores and our sidewalk now that goes pretty much all the way up to Curtauck, we really haven't had any infrastructure improvements, but we've had, you know, just gigantic growth that brings people and cars. So unless we bring everybody to the table to look at this in a huge kind of way, you know, have all of the transportation and all the pedestrian studies you want, it's not going to answer the questions, it's not going to give us the solutions that we want. It just isn't. It just can't, you know, until people are willing to do something big about the structure of how we conduct ourselves down here, it's not going to change. It just isn't. And, you know, it's easy, I guess it's easy to blame the pedestrians, but the one thing I will say to that is pedestrians or the visitors? And you keep on a, you know, every time somebody says, you know, with those damn pedestrians, it's just, it's another way of maligning the visitors that come here and spend millions of dollars here. And I think we just need to be careful about, you know, how much we're wanting to make them be the bad guys, about creating all the traffic problems, because it is not just them.
I'd like to just respond to what you just said by saying that I don't disagree that this is a regional issue, and that, yes, last year we were very full, but nobody went anywhere, and I knew that. I was like, we are packed, but no one's going anywhere, and that's why the roads were pretty good last year. I was, I knew this year was just going to be, you know, opening the floodgates, if you will, because people could move around, and they wanted to. But I will say that, yeah, it is a regional thing, and you can, we could have municipalities and governments say that, you know, mandating check-in days, and, you know, there could be a lot of innovative things like that. I think that we are here in Duck at the epicenter of a problem, a little, you know, hourglass, if you will, or a dropper, what do you call it, eyedropper of traffic that drip, drip, drips through our town. And that we should, we should look at what we've got. And I don't really, and I think getting the data is important. We have some data, let's get some more, let's show some forward movement in our location, so that we can be very informed about what we've got going on right here, and we can certainly expand the conversation. I mean, you've, you know, back in the day when they were talking about a flyover on the Route 12, and I mean, it's not new, you know, there's been many meetings over at the Jarvisburg Elementary School, and when DOT comes in, I mean, there's a lot of meetings and ideas, and they've gotten some really smart lights going up in, you know, 12, and there's a lot you can do with traffic lights, but we don't have any traffic lights in Duck. But anyway, I don't, I just want to also say that, so I would like to start in Duck and move out. I don't disagree that it's great to involve everybody, but we need to start in our own backyard. And I also want to say that I don't think by corralling or having pedestrians move in a different way is maligning them at all.
No, I'm not, that isn't, but, you know, always saying that it's because of the pedestrians that the traffic is so bad.
If we have 13 crosswalks, and I'm no traffic engineer, but, you know, we have a lot of crosswalks, and they're, and they are legally allowed to actually cross, you know, wherever the heck they want, you know, we can't arrest them. But, you know, through the, you know, I mean, they're doing what we've kind of set them up to do. So, I mean, I don't blame anybody for this. I think it is great that everybody's moving around, and I love it, you know, and loving that it's healthy and walking, and, you know, we've even looked at alternative ways to connect the communities, knowing that that's a heavy lift, but there are a lot of, you know, different things we can look at. So I would like to proceed with looking at Duck, and then expanding the conversation from there.
Well, it's kind of interesting, because, you know, we are a resort community. We're a victim of our own success. I mean, we have built something here that people want to come to, but at the same time, it's interesting, our visitors are coming from the Northeast, they're coming from crowded cities and traffic jams. And if anybody's ever been to Florida in the wintertime on the beaches, and/or, you know, the southern, you know, the Jersey Shore, and/or the Eastern Shore, they all live with the same problem with traffic, you know, and obviously with engineers or consultants, we may get some ideas from some of the things that in fact they've done in those communities. But, you know, we're not alone in this situation. You know, yes, we got a big problem on 12, but so does every other beach community up and down the Atlantic coast when it comes to summertime or wintertime based upon where they are. And as I say, we are a victim of our own success. But I think if we can engage locally, starting in, perhaps talk to VHB, and I think that they're the most familiar with our situation, and they did the prior study, that's probably the one to talk to. And probably, as we say, we need to initiate some study this month to capture, you know, may continue into the fall, but right now it's pretty serious. So, any other comments? Or...
You said something, I was going to say, that we have to get someone in here now to look at it.
So, Robert, any comments? Monica?
Just a quick comment, just as a step, based on the conversation, I think the appropriate first step would probably be for us to make immediate contact with VHB and ask them, what kind of data do you need us to collect that will be valuable for you in then, because they're not going to be able to jump in and do a study in a month, you know, from now. But if we can begin, I do think that was a very good, that was good insight on your part in identifying that it's important for us to try to capture some of this high-season data. And we can, if we can figure out what kind of data would be helpful for them immediately, we can see what we can do to make that happen.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
As much as we did in 2013 or 14, I'm sure we could get many, many volunteers out there doing, you know, the crosswalk, crossing patterns, and, you know, I'm sure if they could tell us, you know, maybe the same format or something like that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point, Joe. All right, let's wrap on that one. Item number seven, items referred to, and presentation to town attorney, Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item of interest, at least it was interesting to me, and some of you all may already know about this, but I thought I would mention it. As you know, during the pandemic, we've had to have a few remote meetings, and recently, as of in the middle of June, effective July 1, the state legislature enacted House Bill 812, which made some changes to the better for remote meetings. And you'll recall that a remote meeting, first of all, can only be held during a state of emergency. So it's not a year-round, you know, forever and ever type of thing. And of course, a remote meeting is defined in the statute as one in which it's a public meeting, and at least one, in our case, council member elects to participate remotely. So again, that option is only available during a declaration of emergency. So there were two changes I thought I would bring to your attention that came from this bill. One is that if you schedule a meeting and you send out the notice of the meeting, and then after that time, the town receives word that a member, one or more members want to participate remotely, there is a procedure on how to amend the notice to indicate that it's going to be a remote meeting, and how the public can participate. And these changes, of course, all are in place to guarantee that the meeting is open to the public, even though it is a remote meeting. So the second point, I think, would be a little bit more interesting, and that is, that has to do with public hearings during a remote meeting. And you'll recall, the, it's pretty awkward, especially for a quasi judicial hearing, to have held during a remote meeting because of this 24-hour rule where they said that they would accept public comments even 24 hours after the action. So fortunately, the General Assembly has remedied that by amending that section of the statute dealing with public hearings during a remote meeting, and indicating that the public body must allow for written comments on the subject of the public hearing to be submitted between the publication of any required notice and 24 hours prior to the scheduled time of the beginning of the public hearing. It used to say 24 hours after. So now they've changed to say between the publication of the notice and 24 hours prior to the scheduling, scheduled time of the beginning of the public hearing. So I thought you might be interested to know that. It removes a provision of the statute that I think we all found sort of awkward and cumbersome to try to comply with. And so, anyway, so that's a little good news for you this evening. That's all I have.
I have a question. I just, are you saying that the, that the remote meeting rule changes only still do apply in the state of an emergency?
That's right.
So, I mean, all the, all these changes are only when we're in a state of emergency?
That's right.
Okay, just want to make sure I still understood.
And in point number one, did you say one or more council members could be remote?
Yeah, so this... Yeah, so the, the definition of a remote meeting is one in which a minimum of one member elects to participate remotely. But again, I think that, you know, that, that I think is, is when the council is sort of offering that option. And I think a meeting or two ago, I think the council determined that remote, you know, the ability or having that option sort of was no longer necessary. But if for some reason the council felt like it was necessary to bring that back, then, then if one person participates remotely and everybody else, the four remaining people participate in the room, it's still a remote meeting by definition. And therefore, the, the, the point, I guess, the important point I was trying to make was that we don't have the 24-hour, you know, stumbling block anymore. But of course, a remote meeting could also be that everybody participates remotely and have no one in the, in the meeting room.
So basically, a state of emergency for a hurricane could be remote meeting after the...
It could be. For example, if it's a major disaster.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, and it's literally physically impossible to meet for whatever reason, then you could have a remote meeting if it's noticed properly and, and, and even have theoretically any kind of public hearing and not be, you know, not be required to continue to accept public comment up to 24 hours after the hearing. So they made that change and I think it's, you know, a good change. It recognizes what we've all sort of learned as a reality during the pandemic that, that especially for a quasi judicial hearing, it, it just makes it difficult. So just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Robert. Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item number eight, items referred to and presentations from the town manager.
Good evening. Tonight I will present the July information for Duck Fire Department. And we'll start with the overall number of calls per year, which I think is a significant looking graph, especially after the transportation discussion. We're at 328 calls for the year. You can see the years prior from 2017 forward. That is a gradual increase over the last several months in seeing that increase. That's pretty significant for, for our little town. When you look at it from a month comparison, this is similar to last year, which also was very indicative of our traffic patterns last year and the amount of people that were here once the pandemic had eased up a little and people started traveling. When you look at the breakdown of calls, a lot of Rescue 11, we'd expect that with more, more people here, more population, we're going to get more EMS-related calls. And then alarm activations. Alarm activations for us can be anything from bad batteries to cooking, a lot of them can be cooking, but pretty similar to what we saw last year this time. Probably the most significant piece to all of our data is the fact that just overall for the year, we're, we're up. And then when you break it down within a pie chart, again, fire alarm activations and EMS calls lead the way, if you will. July activities, we had a total, as you know from previous slides, 102 incidents, five fire inspections, and we logged 336 hours of training. We're continuing to have Dara County EMS when units are available, be at the fire department on Saturdays and Sundays, and we'll continue that and obviously monitor after Labor Day. If we don't see a decrease, we'll reach back out to Chief Collins to continue that until we start to. And just quickly, I'm trying to do a couple volunteers every month because I think it's really important and we'll, we'll see an interesting shift when I get to the ones I'm going to review tonight. Everyone you've seen so far are older members, they've been here for a long time and they live in Duck. The next two people I'm going to introduce are Scott Davis. He's been with us for 11 and a half years. He's a great asset, he's a driver operator, he's a suppression firefighter. The one difference with him, he lives in Naggs Head. So how he participates for us is he does standby time and he responds to those big calls. So he'll come or he'll meet us if we have to go out of town, that's another thing he can do for us. But we appreciate the longstanding membership with him, with Scott. And then two things to notice, one, Scott was 11 and a half years and now we're down to Lauren here. Lauren Van Riper's been with us four and a half years. So as you see the next few batches of volunteers, you're going to see their time in with us much shorter, the legacy folks I've introduced already. So Lauren lives in Southern Shores. So again, she's a suppression firefighter with us, she's the mom of four, but still finds time to train with us and actually responds pretty regularly. Luckily, she's on the northern end of Southern Shores. So we thank both of them for their service to Duck. Updating you on our firefighter EMT process, we accepted applications through July 21st, 2021. We held the physical agility assessment this past Monday, did the panel interview yesterday, and now I'm working with Drew to, they've brought some names forward that I will interview and Drew will interview over the next few days. Definitely by the next meeting, I hope to bring you with our, our new firefighter name. So that's very exciting. And then just real quickly, I have an opportunity to show something because I think it's hard. Sometimes we stand up here and we ask for staffing and we ask for stuff and we ask for extrication equipment. And how does it all pull together? Because we don't have fires every day, we don't have bad calls every day. But I'm sure you're all aware of on Sunday evening about 6:15, 6:17, we did have a very major crash right near the fire department. And I'll, I'll just show a quick picture here. I'm not showing to glorify, there's no patience in it, it's actually a picture that was taken after the fact. But this is a chance, the biggest piece I'd like to, to say with this is, it's a, we had three people on duty. So it was a chance for us to respond immediately, which has been my goal, as you all know, over the last several years. We had three on duty, they got there quickly, we had five patients, they had to extricate. They did all the things we talk about and the things we planned for and deploy for. And it, it all came together successfully. Everyone left was conscious and we had, again, total of five patients, three EMS units, and it was handled very quickly. We then had follow-up with volunteers to support this mission. But again, the first three responding made a big difference, we didn't have to wait for anyone. So thank you for that and thank you for the equipment that allows us to do these types of calls. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
I was going to say, I talked to Joe Bacchides the other day and I said, is there anything I could do different? He said, you could shut up during these presentations. So he's not even here to hear that tonight. So I'm keeping it very brief in honor of him. I had a great opportunity to go down to Wilmington for a few days last week. The North Carolina Police Executive Association is really the sister or brother organization to the North Carolina Chiefs Association. So it was a really interesting opportunity to talk with officers from sergeant up to chief and get a lot of insight from people all across the state and what they're doing, what's changing. Something that's been very much on my mind over the last year is officer wellness, especially officer mental wellness. Something that I've wanted to implement and plan to implement later this year is, is some recurring annual mental health evaluations and ensuring that our people are, are whole are very important to me. So really captured, a presentation I went through basically said that we need to ensure wellness from hiree to retiree. So that really resonated with me and something we can ensure we do. Also, a great opportunity to hear about what happened in Minneapolis, some of the, the things that went wrong, what went right, state updates on a number of our agencies that we work with. But most importantly was networking, getting to sit down with other chiefs and, and other friends, bounce ideas off them, hear what they're doing and, and came back with some, some novel ideas that Drew and I have been talking about. So I hope, hope that we can get some of that off the ground. So great experience, glad, glad we could do that and glad it was hosted close to home. July stats, pretty straightforward, it's probably our busiest month of the year. So we had 66 traffic enforcement actions last month, 12 crashes, 584 business checks, 13 extra patrols and three arrests last month. So typical summer month for us, don't see any sign of that winding down probably into at least October. Call volume has definitely, we are running a bit ahead of 2020 now, things are definitely catching up. And we're also, as of right now, knock on wood, we're at full staff. So we've got one officer left to, to recruit, that'll be our November 1st officer, so we're looking forward to that. And we'll really begin our efforts, increasing our efforts here over the next month to get that. As always, all of our July LPR reads have been posted on the website, as long as we made a few other additions, Christian and I today, to talk about our vehicle unlocking and then fingerprinting are two, two things that we've added there for public engagement. And I'll give you a funny quick story with this, you know, cops like to rib each other. John's a big, strong guy, as you know, so he got to meet this little guy and, and we asked him what he wanted to do in life and he, he broke our hearts and said he wanted to be a firefighter. But even better, Jackie wasn't there and she saw this picture on Facebook and she, she wrote a comment to John, "I almost didn't see your, your arm behind that kid's big arm." So he was hurt. Told you I'd keep it brief tonight. Any questions?
Just a, just an unrelated question, last year you were working with the league or this year, did that all get wrapped up? They were, the league, when the league came in and was working with you?
Yes, so what we've done, we've partnered with Lexipol. What we realized very quickly was our policies were not even near up to snuff. So we have partnered with Lexipol and we are more than halfway through of completely revising our policy from the ground up. That's going very well. We're getting ready to roll out the second batch of officers here next Tuesday. So the goal now is to complete that process, we'll go back to the league after that. So I've remained in contact with Matthew, Matthew Sells, and we, we bounce policy ideas off quite often, but we'll be able to go through the full review at the end. So it's kind of two tracks at one time, but it's going really well and it's, it's putting our policies to a place where they're absolutely legally defensible and, and vetted, so.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, just a little different format that Kay prepared this evening, terms of the permit stuff. Just looking at this chart, this is a year-to-year for July, looking at, you know, it's kind of the graph. So we're pretty typical for July in terms of number of building permits, if you look across there. This breaks it down into different types of permits, the brown on top are the trade permits, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, et cetera. Building permits are, you know, there'd be new construction or major repairs, renovations, or the orange. And those are the key ones there on that chart. So in terms of all the permits, again, this is showing year-to-year as you go across from left to right. So you could see, you know, to this point for, for the month of July compared to past years, it's kind of an average year. You know, we've had higher years, particularly a couple recently. It's actually higher than it was last year at this point, but pretty similar to that. So looking at this, the only real cluster of activity we had this year was all up in this, this month was in the Sanderland neighborhood. You can see that cluster of pins up there in that area. So saw a lot of activity and investment, you know, renovation work going on up in that area. And not, you know, nothing in, in particular down there to the, the southern end. And I don't even have anything real significant to highlight on the, the permit side. So I'm going to jump into, you know, as far as, we don't have, we didn't have any new construction permits as part of the, the month of July. So shifting over to the basic departmental presentation, did want to let you know the planting of the sea oats and panic grass that occurs this time of year is complete. Emerald Forest filled their contract. Sandy Cross was very hard at work. And pleased to report, when, when we, when we say we've received nearly all dune authorization forms, so these are the forms that the owners give us to do this planting. So out of approximately 340 oceanfront owners, we have, and I'm going to use the word approximately on this, approximately 336 who have submitted their forms and we have four who've said, no, they're not going to do that. So everyone is accounted for, we understand that there are some who, who don't, for whatever their reasons, don't want that type of activity adjoining their property and, but we've covered all that, so we're in good shape moving forward now. Having these authorizations in hand, that allows us to comfortably proceed with this program in future years, knowing that we have a, you know, vast percentage of the owners who are supportive of this and have actually given their written authorization for us to continue.
Excuse me, Joe, does that go for three or four years or how long do those authorizations last?
And do you know, I actually meant to look at that before I came over here.
I think the point is...
I will be glad to, to send you an email on that, that, that is my failing, because I actually jotted a note down to do that in case that came up.
Well, I just only, the reason I ask is because it had to happen because they were all expiring, so I...
Correct, correct.
It's probably five to seven years or something.
And I can just zip you a quick email on that to give you that answer.
It's just something that we have to do every so often, basically.
Yeah, correct. So Duck Trail improvements, we are, and this is kind of a neat period of time here, you know, we had our budget, everything was adopted, and you're seeing a lot of this at your meeting tonight, you know, a lot of different components of those capital improvements beginning to come into play. So it's a fun time of year to, you know, to see some of your plans come together. So we are in the final process of designing, you know, having the engineer do the final designs on this area that stretch north of Oyster Catcher Lane, connecting up to the other areas that's already been done to the north. We have $110,000 budgeted for that. There will be sections of regular concrete, sections of permeable in there that will help with some of the stormwater management. We will have, by the, the next time you meet, that bid package, we expect that that'll be out the door. So we will have that out, be accepting bids from our, you know, the contractors to construct that project and would anticipate that would be constructed this, beginning in the sometime this fall. Similarly, if you'll recall, we had added in this year after doing, analyzing some other needs of the town, we had identified a number of bulkhead repairs we're going to be looking at over the next few years that had sort of been deferred for many years. This year, we have three sections, there's a very small, very low bulkhead near Takahoe that's simply going to be removed and re, just kind of regraded, restabilized. There's this bulkhead north of the core, kind of on the northern end of the, the core property adjoining that. And then there's a larger bulkhead in the area where Pintail Drive is along Carolina Dunes. It's the section that has the seating area in it, that's in pretty rough shape. Those are the three areas we're targeting this year. After talking with the, some of the likely contractors on this, the marine construction contractors that do the retaining walls, we were advised that it would probably be in our best interest to defer the bids on this due to the cost of lumber right now. They are, they're seeing it beginning to come down already, but they advised us that it might be in our best interest to delay that for a few months at least and then bid it at that point with a construction more in the winter and spring months for that project. So we're, we're taking their advice and, you know, hopefully we can get something, because the other, the danger we face is that it could be, bids could come in over budget and we, you know, we're going to do what we can to try to avoid that. So, just so you're aware of that change in the timeframe. Regarding the brick project, just had a number of things on... timeframe. Regarding the brick project, just had a number of things on this. VHB is finalizing that design. That'll again occur within this coming month. As part of that, they're coordinating with the Department of Transportation, who obviously is a key partner in this project with us. They will be submitting for those permits soon. Again, that may occur before your next meeting even. Looking at a bid process dependent, that'll be dependent on the permits and how quickly we're able to go through that with the different agencies. But sometime September, October, we will need as part of this project, some additional easements on the east side due to some of the stormwater management aspects of this project. I'm, I'm going to present those to you at the September meeting. I'm going to give you a little better idea so that you, you can conceptualize what's going on as VHB wraps up the design. I'd like for you to have that information as you get questions from the public. But there will be a couple of areas we would need easements on the east side of the, the road that we do not have from associations. And finally, we are working positively with the Duck Ridge Shores neighborhood on revisions to the, the easement that we had with them for that southernmost property within this project area. So we're trading drafts back and forth, but moving forward with that and hopefully reaching some, some good resolutions to that so they can begin to get signatures from owners. Regarding the grant itself, love to be able to make an announcement, but there is no final decision yet on that $1.7 million project. Shifting over to our other significant project, we're at a very, very key point in the beach renourishment project. CPNE has prepared the final bid package and that went out yesterday to all of the contractors. So they're anticipating a pre-bid meeting. That's where the contractors can come in, ask their questions, get clarification, that type of thing on August 12th. And then there'll be the bid opening is anticipated for August 31st over it. That'll be held over at Dare County. So after that meeting, that, that will be the day before your, your next council meeting. So we will be able to report presumable, presuming that bid opening date holds, we will be able to at least report something to you regarding those bids. We'll have some important news regarding that one way or another. We are engaging in some final efforts regarding construction access to the beach. Which really, I guess we have two associations we're still trying to coordinate some things with. And as mentioned before, construction on the project is still scheduled for summer 2022. And that's all that I had for you this evening, but be glad to answer any questions the council members might have.
I guess just on this particular project, when we, if we get to the, to the point where the bid openings and you have something to, you know, to announce for the first, you know, that would be great. I mean, obviously that's what we're all kind of anxiously waiting for. I think what I'm looking to get is the idea of like, if, what, what we'll be getting from that. Would they actually say when they were going to do it or they would give us a window of when they were going to do it in the next summer if, you know, you know, is that part of the presentation that they put together with the bid is not only how much, but exactly what the schedule would be in terms of window?
It's, it's unlikely we would have that level of detail with that. We would have, you know, we, we would know whether the, the bids were within the anticipated, you know, the estimates we've had from CP and, CP. We would have an idea of when they might start, but I, I don't, I think it'd be unlikely we would know the order in which they plan. In other words, we, we might know an overall-
Window.
Schedule that they have, that that particular company is looking at accomplishing-
Okay.
-this project within this timeframe. But I, you know, just knowing how it went last time, we, we generally wouldn't have that kind of detailed information on when they would be in duck, which is what everybody wants to know. Well, you know, we will push for that to get it as soon as we can because it's important for a lot of different reasons.
Yeah.
But I, I don't anticipate we would have that level of detail as a result of that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Council. I also promised to be very brief this evening and so you'll see that here. But I did just remember something pretty cool that I'll start with before I get into this. This weekend, Sandy Cross and I are traveling to Moorhead as long as COVID restrictions allow to receive for the Town of Pelican Award from the North Carolina Coastal Federation. And it's in recognition of a lot of our sustainable projects that we do. In particular, we were nominated for working with the Oyster Shell Recycling over the winter because our staff took on a lot of that duty due to the pandemic instead of using volunteers. Our duck sweep, our sound cleanups and trying to reduce single-use plastic at our events. So those are just a few of the reasons we've been nominated for this award. So we'll be sure to bring back photos and, and fun things. Okay. So very quickly, I'm not going to go too in-depth on events because I'm afraid I will jinx us. We are watching the COVID news very closely. All of our current events are outdoor events and we are following the best practices that we can. We do have hand sanitizer available at all of the events. There's a lot of places for people to move around. In addition, most of the events that we hold in the amphitheater, except for the magic show, can be moved to the green if needed, if people are interested in spreading out more. So for right now, we're going to keep trucking along and just keep an eye on what the governor and what the county are saying. We probably will re-meet, you know, with the event planners and the Outer Banks like we normally do. We had stopped doing that when the mask mandate was dropped and everything really opened up, but I believe we're going to go back to that and sort of get a consensus around the county of safety levels and best practices. But I will, I did want to say here that the events that Betsy's been working very hard on have been very well attended thus far. So I'll say the same thing for the Jazz Festival. I'm still planning. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail tonight in the interest of time, but we are still on with all of the same bands, except I did have to make one substitution for an artist who could not get her visa renewed in time to travel to the United States, most likely due to COVID. From the public information side, obviously we will be continuing to message things that come from the state and the county. We're usually very closely aligned with what the county sends out. The governor did speak today, but didn't have any new mandates or, or changes to any of the ways that we're functioning. So we, we haven't sent an update about that, but we have been sharing the updates from the county that show the increase in cases. Stepping away from COVID, we do have some new graphics and information from the National Weather Service. And the graphic that you see on the left here is a, is a graphic they've provided as a reminder that the peak of hurricane season is not yet here for our area. We do hurricane preparedness week earlier in the year, about once a month, I remind people on social media to get their passes, to their re-entry passes, to get their plan together. But National Weather Service and NOAA are doing another push right now, a month before the height of the season. So they'll be providing some things for us to use as well, which is exciting. The second one right there that says emergency alert severe, many of you on your phones, if you have your wireless alerts activated, will get that. If there's a tornado warning, if there's something really severe happening, it will automatically come across your phone. The National Weather Service, after a lot of study about the severity of some thunderstorms, including thunderstorms that have large hail or very dangerous winds, they are going to start sending them out. They can tag severe thunderstorm with a, let's see, it's called a damage threat tag. And that will push this out to the wireless emergency alert system. That went live at the beginning of August. So we'll be sharing a little bit of information about that, but I also wanted to make everyone listening aware. The Weather Service, this is a quote from them, "They hope that it won't happen very often, but it's a nice tool to have for when things like large hail or surprisingly disruptive winds could really cause a lot of damage." And that's all I have for tonight. I finished with the sea life was the theme for the chalk art last week and everyone did a really, really great job and this was one of my favorites. So I put it there. Any questions? All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Christian.
Congrats on the award, Christian.
Thank you. More about that next.
Well, I'm calling up my presentation now. I'll mention mainly to brag on some of your staff. If you have not gone to the amphitheater in the past week, I encourage you to go over there. All the seating is done and then Kim Pittman went the extra mile and he actually pressure washed that entire building.
Oh, my God.
So it looks almost brand new. So one of the advantage of, advantages of having Kim on staff, he really did a, a great job. And all, you know, all the new composite seating has all been pressure washed so that it really is a very attractive facility now. So please take a minute to go over, take a look at it if you can. And then if you happen to see Kim, just thank him, because we certainly do. So your monthly financial report, as you saw from the memo you got from Teresa through me this morning, is a little bit different because we're really not going to talk anything that much about July, mainly because, it's going to sound bad, nothing happens in July. A lot of the revenues that are coming in in July, most of them are actually booked back to June. A lot of the expenditures that occur in July are booked back to June. So really not much to tell you about the month of July. I will tell you how much money you have in, in the bank. So right now we get about $9.1 million total, which is about 1.6 million more than we had last year at this time. And as I show you every month, how we have that allocated into the different funds, this is actually a, this is a 13-month chart, shows you where we were in July last year, where we are now. We're still maintaining about 6.5% of your cash is held in our general account. Again, our target is to try to keep that 10% or below. We'll, we'll move around that as best we can. And again, just aimed at trying to get as much return as we can in terms of interest. Still in a very low interest rate environment, as you're all aware. Teresa's memo to you included some information about revenue and I, I wanted to, to show you this. So this is fiscal '21's revenue through, through June, and we still have some payments that are, that are going to be booked to fiscal '21 yet. The message that she got to you today was we've collected 99.99% of our Adwill Arm taxes. $676 is all that's remaining outstanding. So that's an incredible collection rate. Sales tax, as you can see here, we're right now at 131% of budget. So we're, we've collected more than we budgeted and we still have one more payment come. And that's typically one of the larger payments that, that we'll get for that revenue source. Real estate transfer tax, yeah, 229% of budget. So we collected a lot of money in real estate transfer tax this year. And then occupancy tax, we're ahead again of last year by about $283,000 and we still have one more payment on occupancy tax coming. So we've had a really good year on the revenue side. You know, the utility franchise tax is still going, we're still going to end up a little below, about $22,000 below budget on that. And we've explained and talked about that in the past. And then this just shows you, and I provided you these, these slides, we had them now in front of you. And this just shows how we, we stacked up year, this year versus budget and as compared to how we ended up the, the prior year. Again, we've had an incredible year in terms of occupancy tax and, and sales tax. Expenditures are all mostly within budget. You know, we, IT is a little bit out of budget and we'll be able to explain that, some additional expenditures that came through. But overall, general fund is going to end up well within budget. And again, this is that same chart. I won't spend a whole lot of time because you have that in front of you. Teresa is now working on the, the financial statements for fiscal '21. So she prepares those in advance of the audit. So Johnson, Mizell will come in and perform the audit. You approved that audit contract this evening on your consent agenda. And then this is just revenue and expenditures. I, how are we doing on time, Mayor? Can I take a little, can I take-
You're okay.
Okay. All right. So in case you haven't figured, I'm a little bit of a data nerd. And I, Mayor Pro Tem Thibodeau was able to get me connected with someone that could give me good data about occupancy and, you know, occupancy revenue and meals revenue. And I was able to, to look at that. And I just want to present this, I think everyone understands that we're, we're doing pretty well in Dare County. So this is total meals and occupancy revenue. So the dollars that changed hands for occupancy and the dollars that changed hands for meals. This is, this is not the tax revenue. And it shows over the last, so that's the first five months of the year for the last four years, with 2021 being the, the light blue bar. So when we say that we've had a good first quarter plus of, of the year, that's an understatement. We're just clearly outperforming budgets and this is why we have traffic. There's, there's just a lot of people coming here and a lot of people spending money in Dare County. And of course, we do get a piece of that. This is duck. So they, they actually, the, the data is granular enough so we can know what is spent here in the Town of Duck on meals and, and lodging. So you can see, again, you can see April of last year obviously was near zero and then April of this year. And then again, May was, was a little light last year and incredibly heavy this year. I thought this was, this was kind of interesting and this, me being new to the Outer Banks, having, you know, kind of getting a better understanding of where the money gets spent, especially in, in these occupancy and, and meals, in terms of occupancy and meals. The, the green here is the northern beaches. So this is really, it's kind of Manio North. They include Manio in, in, no, no, I'm sorry, they don't. Roanoke Island is Manio. So it's Nag's Head North and then Hatteras Island and then Roanoke Island. So you can see, and I think anyone that drives around, you will understand that that's where the money is, right? As far as the transacting money for, for lodging and for meals. And then they do get it, they do get it more granular. So in this is, these are just 100% graphs. So it just, it just shows the proportion that each city has. So the light green at the bottom is the Town of Duck. And then again, just thinking about it as you're, as you're driving along, this, and this is just occupancy now. So, you know, KDH represents a very big chunk of that, as does Nag, Nag's Head. It's going to just, it's just cool information to have and just to get a perspective on where we fit in, the Town of Duck fits in, in terms of our contribution to the pot of money, because all this, all this revenue then is taxed, and we get a portion of that back. That's your occupancy tax. Again, being, being kind of new this was, to the area, this was very interesting to me. This is the type of occupancy. So it's bed and breakfast, you can't really see, that's a dark blue, if you could see it. Campgrounds, you can see a little bit, are in the, in red. Cottages are in green. Then hotel motel is purple, and I think, probably doesn't surprise anyone here that the homes under property management are clearly the lion's share of the occupancy revenue that's generated here in Dare County. Then this is gross occupancy revenue for the northern beach towns. Again, we compare pretty well to some, and, you know, obviously, I think it's, again, just drive around, you can look and see, and you understand where people are staying, coming on vacation. But obviously, the Town of Duck is getting a good share of those folks. Again, this is just gross meals revenue. Again, anyone that's driven the whole Outer Banks, you understand where people go to eat because of the availability of that, and the northern beaches is obviously the majority of that. And then breaking down the northern beaches, again, Town of Duck is the lighter green on the bottom of this. So this is the amount of revenue generated by our restaurants here in the Town of Duck. So you can see how important the economy here in town is in the overall economy of Dare County. And then just, this is just gross meals revenue, again, by town, just shows you the gross meals, not the 100, not the 100% graph, but just how, how things stack up. And again, this year, we're knocking it out of the park again. So all of that translates into what you're seeing in occupancy tax revenue and sales tax revenue coming through your books. And I can, I can get to this, this one needs, needs a couple more months, but as I was looking at this, I think what we're going to start to see is, and people talk about the shoulders getting wider, and I, we need a few more months of data to see how wide the shoulder really is in the shoulder season. Thank you for getting me connected with her, because she, she gave me actually a direct link to the, to the data, so.
Great.
I'll provide this to you, maybe not necessarily in this forum, but I wanted to show you some of this information tonight, just for perspective, as we talk about things like, like traffic. I think everybody understands that things have been busy, and, you know, obviously, people that work in the, in that business understand it's been busy. We can see it's really translating into the, the dollars coming into the local economy. And that's, oh, the last thing I'll tell you, so we interviewed five candidates on Monday and Tuesday for the finance and HR administrator position, five very good candidates. All of them participated in the panel interview, all of them made a mock presentation to the town council, and I spent time one-on-one with each one of them. We'll be moving to the next phase of the, of the process and inviting a couple of folks in for a follow-up interview and hope to be able to get a, a job offer made within the next couple of weeks. So we'll hopefully get that position filled.
Good.
Great.
Thank you. Drew.
Thank you. Go on to item number nine, the mayor's agenda. A few things I've got in the docket coming up. Last week, I did attend the monthly chairman and mayors' meeting on COVID, our monthly meeting, and obviously, last week was no good news. I did send you a email on that, and you saw the results yesterday, and I had also talked to Sheila on Monday, and we basically doubled the cases over the last week. And in fact, the number of cases last week, 165, were the fifth worst we had during all of COVID. And in comparable period last year, we only had 40-some versus 165. So a lot of concern, obviously, over this Delta variant and the number of vaccinations occurring. So the governor is, as Christian said, the governor did talk today, but he really didn't say much more than, than get vaccinated. And of course, they haven't, we have gone to masks mandatory now for our public meeting here, as have some of the other towns across the Outer Banks. Tomorrow morning, I actually have the local leadership foundation executive committee meeting. For your information, we're still, still in the rebuild cycle of that foundation and putting together strategic plan and, and strategies for fundraising. Also attended the league executive committee meetings, we had two in July, and kind of interesting subjects, because if you remember my talking about it prior, in May 2017, we lost all three buildings the league had in downtown Raleigh, worst fire they'd ever had in 100 years. And finally, last week and this week, they've started demolishing the buildings. So it's taken that long between insurance and dealing with Raleigh, and, and finally, the, the buildings are being diminished, demolished this week. And I do have a finance committee meeting up in early September in advance of a board meeting in September. That's all I have to report tonight. With that, we'll go to council members' agendas, starting with Mayor Pro Temp Thibodeau.
Thank you, Mayor. Really do appreciate that, this data, that graphic form of the data that you've got from the, you know, Visitors Bureau, and I know they probably enjoy seeing it, too, if you think about sharing it, because they love numbers, too. So thank you for those visuals. I, on the Visitors Bureau realm, I did attend the commissioners' meeting on Monday morning, where we, you know, showed, showed a good strength of enthusiasm, a good showing of enthusiasm by many of the board members to, with Lee Nettles, the director, to go before the commissioners to have the next, the concept for the Soundside Event Center building, you know, at least have some kind of, some, a concept to try to take next steps, which would be to go before the Town of Nags Head and try to work through some of their zoning restrictions, much like they might have done for the hospital or the YMCA, this special building. Kind of a neat concept, if you haven't had a chance to look at it. It's something that's been in the thoughts for quite a while, and briefly, I'll just say that it's, the full size of the building would be about the size of Publix, about 48,000 square feet, with a 26,000-square-foot meeting area that, that's tucked into the northeast corner of the property so that it preserves over 70% of the view. So it's mostly green space. It's also has a removable, kind of a, I'll call it a garage door, for lack of a better word, a kind of a wall on the southwest side that would open up to the green. So it's kind of exciting that way, and would have some elements, including a working, a large kitchen that could be used for teaching, high school, and COA, you know. In addition, of course, doing catering events. It's, it's meant to house anywhere from 350 to up to 2,600 people, and could do things with this indoor facility, the 26,000-square-foot portion of the, the meeting space, if you will, the flex space, would be anything from a car show to sporting events that were inside, and, you know, meetings, concerts, small group things, pickleball, which is getting to be very exciting for a lot of people. So a lot of things that could be done with this space, a big, large interior space. So it's kind of exciting, and the commissioners did endorse the plan to, just to take it to the next steps. Long way to go, who's, how's it going to be paid for, et cetera, and, and working through the town, but at least it was, it was a very, really nice, very well-done presentation by Lee, and I'm sure you'll see more of that down the road. So that's all I have on the Visitors Bureau, and then I do just want to thank the public for making comments, sharing their views. It is difficult to have people, you know, the public question my integrity personally, but I certainly understand that that is within everyone's realm, and I encourage public comments, and I encourage anybody to speak to me anytime they like, one-on-one. I welcome input from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Councilmember Rob Mooney.
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Sandy Whitman.
I'd like to thank Drew also for his graphs tonight, and also like to congratulate Donna on her appointment for two years, is it Donna? To the, to the first vice president, is it? Congratulations.
Thanks, Sandy. Councilmember Nancy Cummins.
Have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to move on to item number 11, and I will open up the floor for any additional public comments. Patty.
Patty Bossert, Pelican Way. Earlier was mentioned about the facts of the case regarding our former town manager. I'd like to remind everyone that the facts of the case against him were presented to a magistrate. There was probable cause to determine a crime was committed, and that our former town manager committed the crime, and an arrest warrant was issued. He ultimately pled guilty to assaulting a female, our town employee. If anyone knew of his behavior and failed to speak up, shame on you.
Thank you, Patty.
Mark Leahy, 105 Bunting Lane. I just wanted to point out that, to everyone, in terms of the traffic, having trash trucks on our streets five days a week doesn't help a bit. We're currently in Sanderling dealing with trash on our streets five and six days a week, between recycling and trash being split up, and clearly, that's having a, an effect on traffic every morning, them being out there. So I just wanted to mention that. And also on traffic, clearly, it's not a pure pedestrian issue, because as Drew had mentioned, when it rains, there aren't pedestrians out, and traffic is probably worse than when, when it's sunny. So it's two things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? There being none, I'll close public comments. Is there any other business coming for the council this evening? All right, we're going to go on to a closed session. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Temp, who shall read the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session in accordance with Section 143-318.116 of the North Carolina General Statutes to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment, of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee.
All in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Now that we're closed session, and I'd like to make a motion as a result of the performance appraisal of town manager Drew Havens, that we increase his salary by 4% to a level of 135, 200, and grant him a $5,000 bonus. And with that, any discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Glad to share. I'd like to remind council, our next meeting will be the regular meeting on Wednesday, September 1st, at 6:00 p.m. With that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.